I call to order the September 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners' regular session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Commissioner P. Reddick.
Present.
Commissioner Steve.
Present.
Commissioner Derek King.
Present.
Commissioner Helen Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present.
Commissioner K. Appleby.
Here.
Commissioner Rochelle Patrick.
Present.
After a moment of silence, Commissioner Smith, I'll have you lead this in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I should have added, keep Jake Smith and his wife and family in your prayers today. They're expecting a baby at any moment, so we wish them the best of luck.
Breathe.
Yeah?
Off, guys. My apologies.
Yeah. There's a reason if he runs out.
We need you.
Right. Approval -- that's a sad fact.
I know.
Approval agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the September 5th, 2019 Board of Commissioners' regular session agenda as presented?
Some move.
Have a motion, supporters. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' August 15th, 2019 regular session as presented?
Some move.
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' time. The next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizens' time, the Board Chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the Board. A person recognized by the Chair shall approach the podium and state his and her name and the community of residence. A person may address the Board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The Chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Does anyone like to address their commissioners? Anyone? Anyone? All right, we'll move on. Elected and appointed county official comments. Comes the sheriff.
Well, you have credit, so it's fine.
Thanks, sir.
So, just wanted to share a couple items at the sheriff's office this past week. Unfortunately, one of those is a sad item. This morning, one of our retired canines, Turbo, passed away. He worked from 2007 to 2016, so we inherited Turbo and Deputy Pickett's from Springfield when we took over the contract with Springfield. So Turbo worked for, from 2007 to 2013 with the city of Springfield and then for us from 13 to 16. So, you know, close to 10 years is a long time for a service dog to work. He lived the last three years in retirement out in Penfield with his handler, Deputy Guy Pickett's. And Guy has another service dog that's been working with him the last three years as well. But it's sad. Sad, it's always sad to lose a animal, a pet, a dog, cat, but when that animal is your partner for 10 years, it's really tough on that handler as much as Guy puts into his job with the canine. So if you know Guy, if you see Guy, you know, keep him in your prayers. The other item is a good item. Yesterday in the jail, we had another GED graduation. Young gal who actually gets out this next week had her, received her GED in partnership with Battle Creek Public Schools. It's an awesome thing we have going for an opportunity for inmates within our facility to get a GED while they're with us. Since we've been in that facility, there's been over 270 folks get a GED while in the facility along with that partnership with Battle Creek Public. So there's 25 folks right now in the class. So, and we're trying to keep track of those when they get out, if they continue to try and get that, if they don't complete it with us. So we're setting up steps to connect them, to keep going at it. The gal that just got her GED scored the highest score possible on the math side of things, which I told her I probably couldn't do. So, and she's planning on going out to the KC Regional Manufacturing and Tech, RMTC and pursue a career in welding. So.
Nice.
That's.
So what I will offer on behalf of the entire Board is condolences to Guy and the rest of your staff.
Thank you.
Please pass that on.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody else? Helen?
Hi, I'm Helen Guzzo, Manager of Calhoun County Senior Services and co-chair for the second year of the annual United Way Workplace Campaign. And I passed out a schedule. I just wanted to kind of go through the highlights and we have a resolution recognizing the United Way Campaign. It's kind of kicking it off for the county. And I want to recognize Chris Sargent from the United Way of Battle Creek, Calhoun Zoo Region, Marsha Starkey from the Albion Homer Region, and Cindy Lake from the Marshall. We are very unique in that we include all and we have four United Ways in Calhoun County. And so staff, when they make their pledge or contribution, have a choice of designating to which of those three United Ways they want to support. So an undesignated donation of $50 or more qualifies anyone who donates to the United Way of Battle Creek and Calhoun Zoo Region to a drawing for $28,000 towards a new car at 10 participating Southwest Michigan car dealers. So that has been actually, when you talk to people, it's actually an incentive for them to participate, to be eligible for that drawing. So we decided this year to change up our local drawings and we're going to do, all employees who pledge a dollar or more in a per-pay period in the payroll deduction by the 27th of September are part of a drawing for their coveted United Way parking spots at the three county buildings. So for six months, we'll do two drawings and so we split it up into two six-month periods. And then we have a variety of gift cards and prizes and we're soliciting gift cards. So if you have a gift card in your wallet that you haven't used, you want to contribute to the employee drawing, or you have some other item of value, we will, we are taking donations to that, for that drawing. Megan Reynolds, who manages the Friend of the Court, she is coordinating the campaign for the courts and I'm doing it for Marshall here. And Lucy Blair is also part of the committee and Doug Farrell, who used to work for the St. Joe United Way, has joined our leadership team. So it's the four of us. We've met with Kelly. We've designed this very simple, but hopefully highly effective. Last year, we raised $19,000 and had a 23 percent participation rate. We've got about 719 employees now. So our goal is 25,000 with a 25 percent participation rate, a little bit of a stretch goal. This year, we wanted to do something tangible and so we're going to combine it with a food drive. So Doug Farrell has worked with the Food Bank of South Central Michigan and we're going to do a food drive along with the United Way drive to get pledges. The power of the United Way is payroll deduction. So that's why we've limited the drawing to those who do payroll deduction. We accept cash and checks, but payroll deduction is really the hallmark of a United Way campaign and that's what we want to encourage. So we're also going to do casual day stickers for parts of the county that support that, so in Marshall and at the Health Department and some of the courts. So we raise about $500 through casual day stickers. So the highlight is Derek King and Max Eppson being our grill masters. The cookout in Battle Creek and the Sheriff's Department Garage is on Tuesday, September 10th. It's the same day as the poker walk, which we collaborate with, with the city of Battle Creek. So court employees are going to join the city of Battle Creek and walk downtown and then they're going to come and have a fun apple and chips and hot dog and a wonderful grill cheese burger that Derek King is going to personally purchase the meat and shape the meat and cook it and it's going to be delicious. And then we follow that up with a cookout here at the Marshall Building, so we invite you to join us. And I'm, my husband and I are leadership donors to the United Way because we believe in the power of working together. We believe in the power of United Way to do things. When I worked for the city of Battle Creek, I worked really closely with the homeless coalition and community action gets both utility assistance and first-time rent and security deposits from the United Way. The Share Center serves lunch. It's the drop-in day center and they serve lunch funded by the United Way and some dinners. And the courts on Mondays have an eviction prevention program that Legal Services gets funded through the United Way of Battle Creek, Calhoun Zoo Region. And those things make a difference in people's lives. So like senior mileage creates good with low-income people that struggle with making ends meet to feed their kids. The United Ways, they smoke, I was a reading buddy when I was working in Battle Creek and so I went and read every Thursday with three kids, three third graders. And that reading buddy program is a program I know that's also, readings also supported in the other United Way at Albion Homer and in Marshall. So I believe that the United Way creates a lot of good in our community, so I urge everyone, all the employees, and we thank you for your leadership. Your resolution today kicks off our campaign.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have two special order businesses and Derek King is going to read the proclamation for United Way.
Thank you, Chair. This is the Calhoun County Workplace United Way Campaign, which is for September 5th through the 27th of 2019, whereas the United Way does what no single organization can do alone. Whereas Calhoun County Government supports advancing the common good of our community and the United Way works to strengthen the community by mobilizing donations and volunteers to support programs for children, health, education, and basic needs for all people. Whereas Calhoun County contains three United Way organizations, Albion Homer United Way, Marshall United Way, and the United Way of Battle Creek and Calhoun Zoo Region. Whereas Calhoun County employees and elected officials are asked to donate to the United Way of their choice in this annual workplace campaign by payroll deduction, cash, or checks. Now therefore, the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the elected and appointed officials and employees of Calhoun County Government, hereby proclaims its support for the Calhoun County Workplace United Way Campaign from September 5th to September 27th, 2019, and encourages participation in the fundraising campaign signed by our Chair, Steve Frisbee.
Have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Some move.
Have a motion, supporters. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Picture time. Sheriff, you want to join us? Please. Go ahead. Yes, please do. Anybody that's part of the campaign, feel free. Right up here. We photobomb you.
You stand up or?
Just depends. Everyone's a little bit different. It depends on who you are, Chris.
Only behind you, not for Helen. We wouldn't do that to Marsha either.
Right.
Because we want the community of the county together, work together. We're free. You got three. Yes, sir. I really want these.
We'll get more if we need them, don't worry.
So soon.
Is she, is she going to see such a thing?
We don't know.
Right with the midlife or just?
So, did you know the story of that?
If we had the same one.
All sorts every time.
So this is number?
But it's going to a good cause.
Do we know? Do we?
Bookending.
Yeah, two boys, two girls.
Okay. Anytime.
And it only gets more.
Thank you, everybody. Good job. You want, anybody? Oh, okay.
I didn't, we didn't have to reason together. I guess.
We're running out of room.
Yeah, you're going to have to.
All right. Next, I'll read a proclamation for Miles for Memories. Whereas Miles for Memories began with its first event on September 7th, 2013, for the purpose of raising funds and increasing awareness of Alzheimer's disease in Calhoun County. And whereas Miles for Memories has adopted a vision statement of creating solutions for those impacted by dementia in Calhoun County through movement, programming, and research. And whereas Miles for Memories is a volunteer-led organization that has developed programs and trainings across the country aimed at helping those impacted by dementia. Such initiatives offer hope for identifying and providing the best types of care, lifestyle programs, personal training, safety, risk reduction, and more. And whereas Miles for Memories takes pride in amazing collaborations made through the development of the Help Home Program, a program designed to help individuals experiencing some form of dementia, to register in a database maintained by the Consolidated 911 Dispatch Authority. And whereas Miles for Memories has expanded those collaborations to develop a new GPS Safe Return Watch and personal medical ID to locate loved ones that have wandered. Whereas the Help Home Program was expanded in February to include a visual bracelet program aimed at helping provide emergency contact information for loved ones who have wandered or are missing. These combined safety programs have helped bring at least 33 individuals back home without an unnecessary trip to the hospital for care. Now therefore, the County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim that Miles for Memories be recognized for their commitment to raising awareness and funds for dementia as well as creating solutions for families throughout Calhoun County. Have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Some move.
Have a motion and support. Any discussion? I'll just add to that, that that's a group that I'm involved with personally. Our yearly event called the Community Stroll is next, not this coming Saturday, but the Saturday following, about 8:30 downtown Battle Creek. A whole bunch of folks from homes, community care places that have dementia, folks are going to bring them. We walk through downtown for about a mile, have other activities, so encourage everyone to join us that day. And appreciate everybody's support. So we have a motion and support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And I'll get Helen to come back up. She's been involved with us.
Did you realize that as a sponsor of the walk and we participated, we're in the same picture?
Yeah. Okay.
Gary.
Yeah, Gary should go up there too. You're such a real waste of attention. You don't have to lose focus. Uh-oh, you might have given the camera to the wrong guy. I feel like I need to go.
Camouflage, I should do a little bit. I love this. For the old State Police book, though.
Okay. Okay. Right.
Okay. Consent agenda. Can I have approval? There is none, actually. No. We have three resolutions.
Yep.
A note that wasn't. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some move.
Support.
Have a motion and supporters. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Special Committee Workshop and Board Reports. Commissioners? Anyone? Nobody? Okay. I'll just finish that with, thanks to Eric and Bridgette and our finance staff for working at the Health Department to come up with a very favorable budget. You'll hear about that presentation in a little while. So there was a couple other board members on that and that was, boy, who were they?
Sonia.
Sonia Elder and Mark Crawford. So appreciate their help as well. So, good job. All right. Unfinished business, we have none. So we'll move on to new business and county administrator report turned over to Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few updates from boards and committees. On August 23rd, the Calhoun Public Safety Information Alliance Board, otherwise known as our RMS Board, met. It's chaired by Chief Blocker from the city of Battle Creek, the sheriff, and I and Randy Hazel are on that. I think one of the biggest updates we got was that almost all of the partner law enforcement agencies are now doing electronic ticketing instead of paper tickets. So that was kind of a milestone that we had hoped to get to soon. The IT Executive Committee met on August 27th. Commissioner Smith is the Chair of that. We had some updates on major projects this year, one of which is redesign of our county website, so a big project that our communications manager, Lucy Blair, is spearheading. And then also, we're transitioning to Microsoft 360, which is a huge investment in updated technology for our computers. The Calhoun County Economic Development Corporation met on September 3rd. We approved $2,000 in grant matching support for an EPA Brown Field Cleanup Grant to clean up the mound of contamination that's near our Justice Center in Battle Creek to help with an economic development project. And then finally, news that I just got today, in conjunction with our upcoming bond sale, we requested a bond rating from Standard and Coors. We got that today. The report will come out tomorrow, but they did affirm our double-A long-term rating. They continue to talk about strong performance in our general fund, strong management practices, budgetary performance, budgetary flexibility, and strong liquidity. And then on the downside, they see that our local economy is being slow. And also, they continue to mention, we still have work to do on our pension and retiree health liabilities. So it's very positive news. We actually had hoped at some point, we may be in line to get an upgrade, but affirming double-A is pretty good. So that concludes my report on our new business agenda tonight. We have 10 items, not 12. 12B1 is the first one, comes from the Office of the Sheriff. It's on page 64. This item comes before you every year. It's supplemental funding for secondary road patrol. So two deputies assigned, and I'm sure the sheriff wants to speak to this, but it basically supplements the sheriff's office budget to provide two deputies that are assigned to this grant for secondary road patrol and requires us to maintain the certain level of deputies compared to what we've had in the past. So it is about a $200,000 cost for those two deputies. The grant's about 150, so we always need to build into next year's budget the difference, which probably the sheriff has already submitted or will submit by tomorrow.
It's ready to be submitted.
Good.
We're still at discussion, though.
Oh, I'm sure.
So the secondary road patrol grant, as we review and approve every year, we do have two secondary road patrol deputies here in Calhoun. They work primarily traffic, traffic enforcement, traffic accidents, education in traffic. They can be a backup to criminal calls, but their primary function is working the secondary roads within Calhoun County for traffic enforcement, traffic accidents. At the Michigan Sheriff's Association, we continue to lobby to have, we're working on a $2 million appropriation into the secondary road patrol fund and hopefully sometime this year, we might see additional monies come to Calhoun to make it a little more even. Back 10 years ago, we had, I believe it's 10 or 11, we had three deputies funded through this. So back in 1979, when this first started, there were 280 secondary road patrol deputies across the state of Michigan. That's down to 119 secondary road patrol officers across the state of Michigan. So there's been decreases. That funding comes from $10 from each ticket written. There's fewer officers on the street, so fewer tickets are being written and there's less money in that fund. So last couple of years, we've had a $2 million appropriation at the state level as well. But I appreciate your support on this tonight and accepting it.
Can I have a motion to approve the secondary road patrol and traffic accident prevention program? Application as presented.
Some move.
Have a motion, supporters. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Babbitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gattner?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitt?
Yes.
Seven N.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Item 12B3 starts on page 103 of our PDFs and this is a resolution to adopt a local pavement warranty program. This is a requirement that came through new state legislation and our managing director, John Midgley, is here tonight. He worked with our Corporation Council to present this item. It's basically in the form that MDOT specifies and it applies only for projects that are greater than $2 million in paving and projects that have state and federal funding, both of those requirements. And really, from a practical standpoint, it doesn't change the practice that we've been doing in any of our large contracts with the townships to do the local roads. We make sure that we stand by the quality of work. And actually, this resolution, this legislation, only requires county road agencies to, number one, report on all the projects that are over $2 million and then also to consider a warranty program. So counties don't even have to implement one, they just have to consider it and then they have to report on it. So required resolution and we ask for your support.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt and implement a local pavement warranty program required by the Michigan Legislature, MCL 247.662 and 247.663 as presented?
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I would just like to make sure that, you know, I know the state law requires a $2 million or over, that if a township comes up with a $100,000 project, we treat them exactly the same if it's been $100,000 or $3 million. As, you know, I know the state law says $2 million, but hoping that we can warranty that.
I can kind of address that from how we've done it in the past. We've had some road warranty installed in some of our contracts in some of the big projects. So Bedford and Penfield both had road warranties. Admittedly, they're pretty vague. I would expect that those are probably going to be a little bit different in the Emmett Project. ending 2020 budget as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All right. I just, Kyler wasn't here earlier, so I want to tell you what his key role has been in the last couple of years. We've had the opportunity to install Medicaid full-cost reimbursement program. Kyler's led the charge. He's learned about it, he's went and got educated about it, and he's helping implement it here. And what that has done is, just as it says, full-cost reimbursement. And that allows us to ease other dollars into different programs and programming for the community. So I just want to acknowledge you, Kyler, for an outstanding job. So, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 12B3 starts on page 103 of our PDFs, and this is a resolution to adopt a local pavement warranty program. This is a requirement that came through new state legislation. And our Managing Director, John Midgley, is here tonight. He worked with our Corporation Council to present this item. It's basically in the form that MDOT specifies, and it applies only for projects that are greater than $2 million in paving and projects that have state and federal funding, both of those requirements. And really, from a practical standpoint, it doesn't change the practice that we've been doing in any of our large contracts with the townships to do the local roads. We make sure that we stand by the quality of work. And actually, this resolution, this legislation, only requires county road agencies to, number one, report on all the projects that are over $2 million, and then also to consider a warranty program. So counties don't even have to implement one, they just have to consider it, and then they have to report on it. So required resolution, and we ask for your support.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt and implement a local pavement warranty program required by the Michigan Legislature, MCL 247.662 and 247.663 as presented?
Support.
Have a motion and support, is there any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I would just like to make sure that, you know, I know the state law requires a $2 million over, that if a township comes up with a $100,000 project, we treat them exactly the same if it's been $100,000 or $3 million. You know, I know the state law says $2 million, but hoping that we can warranty that.
I can kind of address that from how we've done it in the past. We've had some road warranty installed in some of our contracts in some of the big projects. So Bedford and Penfield both had road warranties. Admittedly, they're pretty vague. I would expect that those are probably going to be a little bit different in the Emmett project, a little bit less vague. We're open to warranties, but with warranties come cost. So as long as people understand that, and John, if I'm saying something wrong, shut me right down, but I think I understand it pretty well. If what you do is the application in a local road project determines how long that road's going to last. So if someone wants to warranty one-inch overlay, we'll do that, probably for about six months, right? If someone wants to warranty a three-and-a-half-inch hot mix asphalt after a crushing shape, that's probably going to get a pretty lengthy, good warranty. So it's all dependent, and we're open to doing those, as long as the local entities understand that increases cost. So we try to do the best job without a warranty. That's not the intent that we have to have a warranty, but I'm pretty satisfied that we try to do a good job with all the quality things that we've been doing. We're getting better, that's for darn sure, so. All right, any other discussion? Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item 12B4, actually, we have two items coming up that are bid awards for the Road Department, so it's through our county purchasing office. 12B4 is cutting-edge bid, which I like the name of, really, it's snowplow blades, but cutting-edge sounds better. So I am going to ask our Assistant County Administrator, Brad Wilcox, to describe this one, and also point out that through the agenda update, the incorrect bid tab is attached to this, so should just ignore that piece, and then Brad will describe how we arrived at the recommendation for Winter Equipment Company.
So this is our sixth-time bidding, which is unprecedented for the Road Department. We started in 2014, so this is one of those bids we do on an annual basis. Just try to mitigate risk and eliminate contingency because of the fluctuation in a commodity, which is pure steel. So you'll see that as part of the result, but we did receive four bids. As Kelly mentioned, we had, in our bid tab, two vendors who didn't meet the spec. They actually bid double bevel when our spec was for single bevel. So we eliminated them from consideration. We had two to consider, Winter Equipment in St. Regis, winter was a low bid. The four contractors that we're considering, or the two that were qualified, so we're recommending them. Winter Equipment provides cutting edges to a number of road agencies in the United States and throughout Canada, including Colorado Department of Transportation, City of Kent, Ohio, and New Hampshire Department of Transportation. So big company. This bid, again, to eliminate some of the contingencies, a six-to-eight bid, so it makes a little bit different. So essentially, we put the bid out, they only guarantee the price for 60 days, but it gives them a good window to look out and to make sure that they can anticipate what their raw material costs are, and then, again, eliminates contingencies. The bid is increased by 4% due to tariffs and other economic factors, but again, I think we're mitigating risk, and 4% I think is a reasonable risk. So $220,000 bid, 35% of that is Calhoun County. We're recommending Winter Equipment in a one-year contract, estimated at $220,000.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to approve the contract with Winter Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of cutting blades in the amount of $220,000 as presented?
So moved.
For the motion support, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B5 starts on page 139. This is a bid for signs and posts for Road Departments of Jackson and Calhoun, recommending Dornbos Sign out of Charlotte, Michigan, and the total for the two years is about $250,000. Roughly half of that is the Calhoun County portion, and I'll turn it over to Brad with that.
Once again, we have four bidders for signs, and it's an area, again, where highly dependent on aluminum pricing, and so we're seeing the results of that come through the bid tab. The recommendations for Dornbos, they provided signs of both Jackson and Calhoun for a number of years. They have been determined to be the low bidder. Unfortunately, low bidder this year is 17.5% higher than the last bid, which was a two-year bid, so significant increase, which that equates to about $22,000 in the total bid as an annual increase. But if we look at our second low bidder, they're 7% higher than Dornbos, and the third low bidder was 20%, so we have this wide fluctuation running out. I think that tells us that although we're having to accept a 17.5% increase, it gets, they are competitive in the market, we're just, again, victims of tariffs and other economic factors. Probably looking next year to have a different strategy. This is one of those where we need to tighten it up and not go two years. It's a foggy forecast for all the economic indicators, so probably shorten it up to two years, and maybe we do strategies, like maybe we do more blanks and, you know, manufactured road signs, but what we're finding is 17.5% is unacceptable. So we'll work with that. We are recommending Dornbos two-year contract for signs and posts, estimated at $252,000.
Can I have a motion to approve a two-year contract with Dornbos Sign Incorporated for Road Signs and Posts as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have two lease agreements. 12B6 starts on page 188. This is an agreement with the State Department of Health and Human Services to lease a small piece of space in the Toller Building. It's really just a renewal. Adds about $8,500 in rental income to help offset our costs for that facility, and I'll ask Brad to add anything on that lease also.
So there is a little bit of history with this bid. Back in 2007, the board approved 35,000-square-foot lease in the Toller Building for the DHS. So it ran from 2007 to 2027. Over the 20-year period, that lease is valued at $12 million. This is another lease that was entered into a rental agreement in 2013 because the DHHS also needed space for storage in the basement. So essentially, the amendment is to add this 2013 rental agreement into the long-term 20-year lease and stabilize that and take out the rental agreement. So it does, as Kelly stated, increase by $8,500, what I call the master lease, and then takes out that 520 foot in the Toller Building. It takes it out of the annual renewal process, where it's literally month-to-month, and we get it stable, and into existing eight more years of that other lease, which is still valued at over $5 million.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Amendment Number Two to the State of Michigan Lease Agreement Number 2524-2007 as presented, and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement on behalf of Calhoun County?
So moved.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B7 is a proposed lease agreement with Michigan Works, who through the Upjohn Institute runs our workforce development program for the four counties. So they are asking to rent just a really small 200-square-feet piece of our Albion building. So that brings in just under $2,000 a year, and looks like we're recommending a month-to-month lease starting this month. So Brad?
Yeah, this is really obviously a moneymaker, but it's an enabler. We have a valued community participant in Albion who's being forced out of their space, so we're just creating a space for them so they can transition to hopefully another great space. But Michigan Works provides a service that's badly needed in Albion, and we want to keep it going.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the 12-month rental agreement with WE Upjohn Institute for 204 square feet of Michigan Works, southwest office space in the Albion Building for $1,920 per year, and authorize the County Administrator/Controller to sign the agreement on behalf of the county?
So moved. Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B8 is option to purchase easement, option to enter into an agreement with the Marshall Energy Center LLC to purchase an easement adjacent to our Road Department property, so that they can build some electrical lines. This is related to a pretty large economic development project in Marshall for the new Energy Center, which is about a $500 million investment that is hopefully going to break ground next spring. They do need this easement to make sure that the infrastructure is in place, and when it's all said and done, it would provide us with about $14,000 for allowing them to use the easement, about five and a half acres or so of our property that is pretty close to the highway and really, we don't use. And this was worked on by our Corporation Counsel, Jim Dyer, so I will ask him to add to that.
That pretty much covers the details, Kelly. There is attached to the agenda item, a graphic that depicts the area of the easement. The easement will be used for the construction of high-power lines by the ITC Corporation that will actually be taking the power from the power plant and distributing it. So it's, where we're concerned, is exclusively the area of the Marshall Road Department garage, and it is on the easternmost edge that's adjacent to I-69. The easement will come down near Michigan Avenue and cross down, come down towards the location of the power plant along that portion of the property. And what we're actually being asked to approve tonight is an option to enter into an easement. They don't expect construction to occur right away. They still have some massive regulatory hoops to go through, as I understand it. And they're, actually, back when I was watching this Marshall City Attorney, over a year and a half ago, we were working with them to, on this project, but they're getting closer every day, and this is evidence of that. So they'll pay us, they pay us now $2,000 for the option. The option is extendable for two years. It lasts for two years, it can be extended for an additional two years, but when they exercise that option, they'll pay us the balance of a total of $16,230, which is actually, frankly, wouldn't be a bad price for five acres of fee simple ownership of property that's not being used for anything productive. So it's a fairly good deal financially, and it doesn't impact the operations of the Road Department.
Can I have a motion that the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, acting in its capacity as a Calhoun County Road Commission, approve an option to purchase an easement for electrical lines with the Marshall Energy Center LLC, and authorize the County Administrator/Controller and the Board Secretary to sign the option and all other documents necessary to create the easement upon exercise of the option?
So moved.
Have a motion and support, is there any discussion? Commissioner King?
Thank you. So a few months ago, we saw a master plan for future buildings at the Road Department, and on that master plan, it was, I know it's pie in the sky, and it's a long ways off, and it's a big investment, but it's going to happen at some point, I would say, anyway. On that master plan, it really did use up a lot of this property. Has anyone done an overlay to see if the easement, which ITC's high-voltage lines, which are transmission lines, I didn't read all the details, but I would say are at least 100 feet on each side, right?
Yeah.
Does that interfere with our master plan for what was planned at the Road Department?
I don't believe it does, but John will probably be in a position to address that better.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't think we're, the architects are proposing to build anything that far east on the lot. It's...
Yeah. I just remember there being a drive along the railroad tracks and a way into the back of those buildings, and I don't think they allow anything in there.
But it was tearing down some existing stuff, so, yeah. I don't think it did.
Staff did take a look at what they were proposing, our permit agent, and nobody raised an issue where it was going on the backside. It's back so far that really should not impact us at all. I would agree, it doesn't impact us today with what we're using today.
You and the future.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's a good question.
I agree with John, the way that hole is back there, there's like no way to build anything along that area.
Yeah.
If you're talking about right along the highway.
Okay.
There's a fairly considerable swale that approaches, that drops down from the property, the usable portion of the property, down towards the highway itself, because you're actually going to go down quite a distance from the elevation of Michigan Avenue, or even 15-mile road. That's 15-mile, yeah, 15-mile road to the expressway level.
Okay, does that answer your question? Anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Compton?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B9 starts on page 230. This is a request under our grants policy for the acceptance of $55,000 in, it's actually federal funding, through MDHHS, to evaluate a new syringe services program for Calhoun County. So as you can see, the item was entered by our Corporation Counsel, Jim Dyer. There's been a lot of discussions with our Health Department, as well as our Medical Director, Dr. Nettleton, who is very involved with opioid coalition and various response commissions. There's a new statewide coalition that was created by former Governor Snyder. So our county is actually being, not singled out, but we're one of several counties that they would really like to target this funding so that we can do kind of this education and community discussions to see if this program, which takes efforts not just of the Health Department, but with our mental health authorities on at point, with law enforcement, to provide all kinds of different services, basically to lower the infections and diseases and management of those, and also provide safer environment for our first responders and law enforcements when people are using injectable injection drugs. So it's a good cause, it's nice that there's some funding available, and it was in the Health Department's budget that you just approved for next year, so helps them to have these conversations. The Board of Health discussed this item a couple of weeks ago and supports the acceptance of the grant. And after that, there'll be a lot more development, depending on what happens with this data gathering and with discussions in the community about if and how to implement a program. And if we were to implement a program, obviously, that will come with different costs and different requirements that would come back to you for approval.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the acceptance of a $55,000 grant from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to evaluate a syringe services program for Calhoun County?
So moved.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Okay, what I wanted to add to that, Kelly, was that the Health, as a Health Board member, that was a pretty good discussion, and I had communication with each of you this week about that. We didn't want to just jump in. We think that would be inappropriate. As she said, Dr. Nettleton is very passionate about this. We asked for some data to support the bullet point statements and things that were made. Not that we doubt him, but we want to have really good reassurances as we move, if we decide as a Health Board to move forward with a program like that. I think politically, it's a bit of a hot potato, it can be, but if we can mitigate that with real data that shows impact, and one of the things that he discussed, Dr. Nettleton did, was folks who participate in needle exchange are five times likely to seek treatment for addiction. That's a national statistic. So there's a lot of studies about that. That's pretty encouraging, so we wanted to see those studies. So we wanted to see those studies. We want to be able to look at that data. And that's stuff that we'll make available to everybody that wants to see it, because I know that's important, and it'll be a hot topic.
Right.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm glad you actually brought that up. I'm glad that you had some extensive discussions regarding that, because obviously it's easy to say it's five times more likely, but somebody who's involved in many boards relative to prevention, it's, it's so, I appreciate the fact that they're, you're really looking for the data to, to be specific and where those studies are actually cited, because again, it's one thing to say it, and it's another thing to actually prove it. So, you know, it sometimes could be contradictory when you're saying you're, you're in a prevention mode, but yet are you in a prevention mode? Be the same thing as if you allowed, if you put a drunk driving lane in a highway, and so there's where your drunk drivers go. You know what I mean? You're, you see what I mean? So I, so I think it's good that we're evaluating it. And I'm very, I'll be very interested to see what the results are. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Towns?
Yes.
Commissioner Vettie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, this last item will conclude my report on our new business, and it's item 12B10, starts on page 243. Uh, this continues the development of our new public defender office. Our chief public defender, Dave Maclet, is here tonight. And so he has been working on implementing a lot of procedures and forms and legal documents to help his office get up and running. This is one of the, I wouldn't say last pieces, but one of the necessary pieces to continue the staffing transition, which is a transition from a court-managed roster of defender attorneys, public defense attorneys for all of the cases, to one where we'll have a pretty healthy staff that, that are county employees, and then also maintain a roster of independent attorneys who will, who will provide, I think it's about 25% of the cases, and help with arraignments. So David has worked with Jim Dyer on this template, and I am going to ask, ask Jim to describe the way that it's presented and, and how this will be implemented.
The main focus that we wanted to present to you today was essentially the form of the contract that's going to be used, and, and the scope of its intended use, and also give you an idea by reviewing the contract of the, of how much will be paid for each of the cases that are involved. Uh, this is a little bit different, because, and I asked David very, very directly, and he was quite clear that, and normally, up to $20,000, the administrator controller has the ability to approve contracts without presenting them to the county board. In each of these instances, in all likelihood, the individuals that will be selected for these will, in fact, earn on an annual basis more than $20,000. But what we're asking you to do in the resolution is essentially to authorize the form of, of the contract, the scope that it'll be used for, and then to authorize the chief public defender to negotiate those contracts to completion and sign on behalf of the county for, you know, a sufficient number of contracts within his budget. So essentially, you continue to maintain budgetary control, you continue to, continue to maintain contractual and scope control, but the public defender is permitted to run his office and hire those people that he, in his best judgment, deems are appropriate for those, for those positions. It, it's really part of the, the notion of making that, that the Michigan Defense Commission is, is presenting the counties to adopt an idea of, of having professional decisions, not either political or decisions by judges as to who's going to be doing this kind of work. But again, we, we did want the board to maintain scope and contractual control over this issue, budgetary scope and contractual control, and I think we accomplished that with this resolution.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the form of contract for indigent, indigent defense contract attorneys, as presented, and further authorize the chief public defender to negotiate to completion and sign on behalf of the county a sufficient number of contract attorney agreements, and to fund those contracts within the amounts appropriated in the public defender budget for contract attorney fees, subject to minor modifications for each individual contract acceptable to the administrator controller and the corporation counsel? So, have a motion support. Is there discussion? Commissioner King?
Thank you. Jim, so I assume, well, maybe David can answer this. Is this for like co-defendant type work? I hear the arraignments and that kind of thing, but is this also for co-defendants? And where folks are hired, folks aren't able to, to take the cases?
Yes. One of, one of the provisions on this, there, there's a number of things. There's a, the goal of, of this contract is to have private bar participation with the public defender's office, which was, I think, the spirit of the original plan. The way that in this case, it's a certain, basically approximately a quarter of everything, from misdemeanors all the way up to the most serious cases. Now, along the way, there's going to be co-defendant scenarios, where you have multiple defendants, two, three, four. The issue, so we're, we're going to, on top of having the roster or group of contract attorneys, we're going to have one individual specifically assigned to make those decisions. The reason being, there could be a conflict of interest if, for example, we have a case, we take one of the defendants, and I say there's a co-defendant, so breaking and entering or something like that. If we start making decisions about who represents that co-defendant, do they get an investigator, do they get an expert, how much is, you know, is that approved or not, that starts creating a conflict for us, because obviously we're representing another party in the case. So we're going to set, I pick a person to make those decisions for us. So if we get one of those cases in, immediately the co-defendants go out. But instead of us making a decision who the attorneys are, investigators and things, we say, conflict council, we're giving those cases to you to make those decisions. So we stay, basically walls us off from those decisions. So there, there is going to be a person, and there is a, an amount of money in the budget to pay that person to do those things. Is that sort of what you were thinking of?
That's part of it. So, but these folks are still going to be subject to the standards set, set by the Indigent Defense Commission, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, every, yes.
Same with the, the, the pay structure and that kind of thing?
Yes.
So I assume you, I mean, because we've had contracted, you know, so you're going to have access to all that through your negotiations and, and looking at the standards, what they pay.
Yes. They're, they're incorporated into this. They have to follow those standards. That's part of the agreement. And in fact, even if the standards are modified, which they will be, which I'm sure you're, you're aware, it's a process that they're going through. I expect different standards to come out, or modifications of standards, that when those take effect, they're incorporated into this contract, and people have to follow them.
Great. Thanks.
So, yeah. Does anyone else have any questions?
Anybody?
Good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nobody else? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Vettie?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Citizens time. Our next item is citizens' time. Same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and no negative personal comments. Judge?
I promise to make no negative personal comments.
Thank you.
Well, I'll try.
There's a couple state fans here, so it's a lot.
I won't even follow up on that. So, it occurs to me, first of all, my name's Paul Beardsley. Good evening. Nice to see you. I'm a judge in the 10th District Court, have been since 2016. It has occurred to me recently that during an, a campaign for a judicial position, we have lots of opportunities to get to know candidates. That doesn't happen when a, an applicant is appointed to the position, as has recently happened. So, since you didn't have an opportunity to meet my new colleague, Jason Bomea, during some judicial election campaign, you have the opportunity to do that right now. So I would like to introduce to you the Honorable Jason Bomea.
Thank you, Judge Beardsley. Good evening, everyone. I am Jason Bomea, and as Judge Beardsley said, I am a 10th District Judge. I was recently appointed by Governor Whitmer. I am excited to work with all of you and for the citizens of Calhoun County. A little bit about myself, I moved to Marshall after law school. That was in about the year 2000. And my wife and I have lived here for approximately 20 years. It's been a long time. It's been a good time. I worked for a local law firm, Schroeder de Grau, which is located here in Marshall, for 19, almost the entire time that I have been here. I've worked for Schroeder de Grau. We have three children, all attending Marshall Public Schools, age ranges of 18, 15, and 11. And my wife is a school teacher. We are embedded in the community and are very active here. My family loves Calhoun County. There are, there's plenty to do here, and the, the people are wonderful. I have been involved in, in many functions in, in the community over the years, but primarily as a practitioner, as an advocate. That all changed recently. In, in my law practice, I had the privilege of working for people, families, and small businesses in varying capacities. And I worked often in the courthouse where, and, and in the courtroom over which I currently preside. I've, I've worked in front of Judge Durham for almost 20 years. And it's going to be difficult to fill his shoes, but I am doing my best. I am on day three. So I'm hoping to have many more. I had a general civil practice and a criminal practice, a business practice. It was diverse because we are in a small, I was in a small community. And the, the focus obviously has changed from an advocate to be, to being completely independent and fair. And that's exactly what I'm going to do on the bench. So I look forward to working with you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And if you ever have any questions or need anything, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a quick update. Last board meeting, I think it was Commissioner Miller asked about getting some information on the pothole patching and the tonnage. We're just getting in the last of the invoices from our contractors, so I should have that information to email you in the next week or so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gary Keller, I would like to speak to you in the township. I would wonder if anybody knows, tell me where we're at on the bridge. I haven't been to a meeting since in the spring. Still play ball. And I wonder if anybody can tell me what we're doing. We're up here $300,000. Replace a bridge and go eat. The service is about less than 100 people or 100 residents. I had an address in this college over by it. It's off of D Drive North, one mile between Main Street and Cedar River, up in Houston, Chicago.
Jerry, if you want to wait until after the meeting, we can interact about that. We can answer your questions after the meeting. It's not a question and answer session, no. Anybody else like to address their commissioners? Anyone? All right. Let's see. Commissioner time. Anybody? Go ahead. Commissioner Tompkins?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to take the opportunity to, uh, give a great congratulations to Sheridan Township today. As, as some of you might have seen the press release, that it was announced that Consumers Energy has signed a major agreement to purchase renewable energy from Ranger Power. Uh, the agreement will add 100 megawatts of solar energy for Consumers Energy customers, and that's specific to Sheridan Township, because it's about 1,800 acres in Sheridan Township, and about a half million solar panels. So actually, this project now is in full swing, now that there is a customer that Ranger Power has. So they will definitely be obviously moving forward with it. But again, I just want to take that opportunity to congratulate Sheridan Township on that positive message this morning. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. Habitat for Humanities is celebrating their 30th year in action going here in Calhoun County. And on September, I believe it's the 9th or 10th?
10th.
Yes, 10th. They're going to have a big dinner there. And also too, Post Franklin, Post Franklin Neighborhood is going to have a cleanup on Saturday, and I know that Commissioner King has volunteered to work with me during that cleanup. So we're going to be over there, and we're going to be cleaning up in the post neighborhood. And I know that Post Cereal is going to be selling boxes of cereals for a hundred, I mean, a dollar and 50 cents.
A hundred?
Yeah.
Wow. Some good cereal.
Yeah, a hundred dollars for a box of cereals. But it's a dollar fifty, and it's going to be a good event. So we're going to be on the corner of Marjory Street and Cliff.
Cool. Thank you. Good work. Commissioner King?
Thank you. So I, I'll address your comments during, um, commissioner's time right now, Jerry. So D Drive Bridge, the culvert there, that is a split situation where the county's covering half, and the township is covering half. The township did, um, commit the funds as well as the county. Uh, that's, uh, that is a very widely traveled road. It, it gets all the, uh, not all, but a big percentage of traffic that comes off of 94 to go to the main Harper, Harper Village, uh, um, uh, business district. I will tell you this, that, um, construction has started. I, the completion date for traffic to be able to pass through that is sometime in October. Um, there is a little delay because of power lines. Um, there was a survey, and, and some power lines, this information came out today. It's not been disseminated yet, but there's, uh, there's some power lines, and, and the cranes have to, that are doing the pylons and, and structure have to be a certain distance away from those power lines, and those power lines are going to have to be de-energized, which will cause a little delay. However, it is still, um, going to be this year and this, this fall when it's, when it's completed. So I, it just...
Will it be a $300,000 project or more?
No, six.
600,000.
Okay.
It, because of the river and restrictions and what was there to what has to be there now, it's a 27-foot bridge by requirements. Um, it's a, it's a precast box, open bottom box cover that's going to be installed there. Um, John, did it sound like I noticed something wrong? Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to mention that I had the opportunity to attend my first meeting in the Michigan Community Corrections Advisory Board a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, we were not able to approve any grants on account of the state legislature not having a final budget in place, and the governor signing it. However, what I did hear was a lot of, uh, a lot of folks echo some similar sentiments we've had here about the grant amounts and what it costs to operate them compared to what the states are approving. And there's a lot of new blood on the commission that, including myself, that took that to heart, and we're going to see what we can do about it. If it means fewer grants for more money, that might be an option, but I'll certainly keep everybody updated.
We're glad you're serving there. That's a great opportunity for Calhoun County to be represented in Lansing, so thank you for doing that.
May I ask a question?
I think you're gonna.
Do you go to church and ask them to help us build that bridge?
Why don't you talk to Commissioner King afterwards, okay?
We'll talk to you after that, but it's already paid for, Jerry.
All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Vettie?
Thank you. Thank you. Chair Frisbee, I missed this earlier, so this is my bad. September Employee of the Month. On behalf of the Employee Recognition Committee, I would like to congratulate Danielle, is it Willerick? Did I say that right? Okay. Who has been recognized as our County Employee of the Month for September. She is a deputy court clerk, and she's been here for a little bit, over four years, in the district court. So you should get to know her, Jason. Um, she is very knowledgeable and is always ready to help anyone. She is described as thoughtful, caring, and simply delightful to work with. Danielle says she enjoys working for the county because there is always something new to learn, and she likes working with different departments and agencies. Her favorite things about her job is the fast pace that it has, and she thinks her coworkers are great, and they're very hard workers, and that... are great, and they're very hard workers, and that makes for her day to be very enjoyable. So, we appreciate that, and we love recognizing our Employees of the Month. So, thank you.
Tacking onto your solar issue in Sheridan, Combas voted earlier, or later, I guess, in August, they have approved 1,100 acres, seven collective owners going into solar. And it's an awesome deal for all involved, and I'm really excited to see renewable energy coming to Calhoun County. I'm more excited to see solar than I am wind farms. I'll be honest, I'm partial to solar versus wind, but anybody that has property that wants to develop it into what they need to develop, I'm good with them having landowner rights, and so I was glad that Combas took action for that. I talked to one of the farmers, the biggest owner in that project, and he said, "Steve, I've always grown food." He says, "I had to come to grips with it. Now, I'm just going to grow energy." So, it was a good way to look at it, and as we become energy independent as a country, anything that folks do to help us with that is a good thing, so appreciate that.
All right. Claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve claims payable for August 9, 2019, through August 29, 2019, the amount of $6,178,837.39 as presented?
Some more support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Are there any announcements? Here comes the 7th District pitch. Go for it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. First and foremost, this Sunday at 6:00 PM is the last, unfortunately, last swinging at the show for the season. Victory Park in Albion, don't miss the finale, which they'll have Howl-to-Go dueling pianos that will actually be performing, which ought to be interesting, and obviously being the last one, free hot dogs will be provided by Castor Concepts. So, certainly should be a great evening. It's been kind of rainy this season, unfortunately, but it's been a really good season of free music for the community. And then also, too, it's back after a summer break, the Homer All-In Community Breakfast is back on track on September 13, Friday, at Homer Community Schools, a great hot breakfast and an opportunity to come down and see what's going on in the southeast part of Calhoun County. And then finally, Jake may be interested in this one, being the whole baby situation, on September 14, at the Albion Community Center. There is a Healthy Babies' Day for 2019. It's a free event for parents who are expecting and are those who have children, newborns through 18-month-old, and their caregivers for the greater Albion community, certainly, but it's a great opportunity to get, there's over 25 booths, lots of free samples available to folks, so it's a great opportunity for, so if you know anybody would be interested, please have them come on out. So, thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Any other announcements? I have one. The September 11th Remembrance Ceremony in McCamley Park, 6:00 PM on September 11. Several speakers, I'll be a speaker again. If you can join us for that night, it's a pretty solemn ceremony, and a great way to cap a day with a remembrance of what occurred in September 11, 2001. So, invite everybody to join us. All right. We're going to go into a closed session, so I need a motion to retire to a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Some more.
Support. Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.